Virtually, Commissioner Thompson, can you hear me? Perfect. We'll go ahead and get started. Work sessions are an opportunity for board members to discuss issues informally with staff and invited guests. The Board encourages members of the public to attend work sessions and listen to the discussion, but there's generally no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the Board are welcome to do so during the Board's regularly scheduled meetings. We have two items on our work session this evening. We have the FEMA biological opinion on page three and then the strategic plan review. We'll go ahead and start with the FEMA biological opinion. I'll turn over to our county manager, Don Boone, and our community development director, Gail Hendrickson.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm just for the record, Community Development Director, Gail Hendrickson. And I do have a presentation, but I'm here this evening just to give you information and to make you aware of some changes that are coming down the pipeline to Cl辛 County and all of the state of Oregon regarding the National Flood Insurance Program. And so before we get started, I did hand out, and there are some copies on the table here for anybody who wants one, some terms and definitions that I'm going to be using throughout the presentation tonight and that, over the next several years, I'm sure we're going to become very familiar with. The first one is BIOP, which is Biological Opinion, and that is the decision that was issued by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services and the National Marine Fisheries Services related to the impact of the flood insurance program on endangered species and critical habitat. And so henceforward, we shall call it BIOP. Another important thing to keep in mind is how FEMA defines development, and the definition is up there, but it basically covers any type of activity that you might want to do on your property. So even something as simple as putting in a swing set could technically be considered development. And then the rest of the ones, I won't go through, but you do have them here to reference as we go through the presentation this evening. So just briefly, I want to talk about how we got here. 1968 is when the National Flood Insurance Program was created. Cl辛 County entered into that program on July 3, 1978, when we adopted our first flood insurance rate map. Back in 2019, there was a lawsuit that was filed by the Portland Audubon Society, and their claim was basically that FEMA, as a federal agency, should be communicating and be assessed on the impacts of the flood insurance program on endangered species and critical habitat. And they had not, to that point, been doing that. So after the lawsuit was filed, there was a negotiated settlement back in 2010, and then in 2011, FEMA formally submitted the paperwork to start the biological opinion It took a long time to complete that process, but in 2016, the National Marine Fisheries Services did issue the BIOP, and we'll talk about the results of that in just a moment. And then basically, five and a half years later, FEMA came forward with a plan about how they were going to make changes to the flood insurance program to address the concerns that were identified in the BIOP. In theory, this is going to go to NEPA review in the fall. It was supposed to go last year, but it's been delayed. So this will start the process moving forward again once they do submit for NEPA review. And then, once that's completed, the timeframe is a little bit murky, but it could be that within 18 months after that opinion is issued, then communities may have to begin implementing the requirements. All right. So the biological opinion itself consists of two parts. There's the impact to the endangered species and to the critical habitat, and then there are solutions that are put forward under the Reasonable and Prudent Alternative, or RPA. So the BIOP itself basically concluded that because of activities allowed under the flood insurance program, that there would be threats to the existence of 16 different fish species and to the southern resident killer whale. And the Reasonable and Prudent Alternative basically set out the goal of achieving no net loss for habitat functions, and that includes flood storage, water quality, and protection of riparian habitat. And so in order to get to no net loss and protect those critical characteristics, FEMA, or not FEMA, but the RPA is emphasizing three priorities. One would be to avoid any impact whatsoever, which roughly translates into you're going to have to prohibit development in order to completely avoid something. If you can't avoid it, your next level is to minimize your impact. So that could be increasing riparian buffers along streams and rivers, as one example, and the number that's been thrown out is 170-foot wide buffers. That's not determined yet, but that's something that has been talked about. And then if you can't avoid it and you can't minimize your impact on it, then you need to mitigate. And one example of that would be to develop compensatory storage areas. So where you may fill a wetland area, you would go and create basically a new wetland or storage area to make up for the loss of that wetland area. And so because of these, the items in the Reasonable and Prudent Alternative, FEMA is going to have to make very significant changes to how it operates its flood insurance program. And so those changes then are going to trickle down to the local governments, which will be both the cities and the counties and every jurisdiction that participates in the National Flood Insurance Program. So FEMA, right now, is putting forward four different pathways for local jurisdictions, and we're not going to talk about these a lot tonight, but these are things that, moving forward in the future, we will have to have some very serious conversations about. So the four options that we are being provided at this time is we can adopt a model ordinance that the state will develop, but has not been developed yet. We can go through a checklist and look at our existing code, figure out what would meet the new requirements, and then add in things that we don't have. And so basically, it's a model ordinance, but under a different name. Then we have the opportunity to develop a community compliance plan, which would go through FEMA review and be a little bit more tailored to the needs of the county, but it will be very expensive and time-consuming to work on that. And then there's also a habitat conservation plan, which is different from the ODF one that we will be talking about later. But basically, this one looks to the Endangered Species Act, Sections 9 and 10, and we would have to develop a plan that would meet the criteria and be consistent with those two sections. And again, that's likely to be a very costly option for the county as well. So before I move on to the next part, I will pause first to see if you have any questions right away.
Each jurisdiction would have to adopt, is this wide with unincorporated only would be?
Yes, that's correct. So the biological opinion itself covers all the areas that are shaded in yellow, and you can see Cl辛 up there in the corner. For our flood areas here in the county, and this includes everywhere, incorporated, unincorporated, the area that is the gray color is outside of the special flood hazard area. All the other areas are within the flood plain or special flood hazard area. And we'll take a closer look at some of those areas in just a moment. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Are they looking at the 100-year flood events, or are they looking like, what is this study based upon?
So the areas that will be covered are, as I understand it at this time, are all of our different flood areas. So it's the 100-year flood plain, which is the most common. It will include areas where there's shallow pondings, shallow sheet flow, and also the areas along the ocean where you have the coastal high hazard area or the velocity zone. So it doesn't differentiate between the different flood zones themselves. If it's in that area, at this point, we assume it's covered.
Just for clarification, the municipalities are going to have to do their own type of process in regards to this, because I'm looking at the Warrenton map and...
It doesn't distinguish between levied areas and...
That's disappointing.
Yeah. So I'm going to talk just a little bit more about the incorporated areas as well. So I wanted to just take us through...
My hand up, sorry.
Oh, Kathy, sorry, Commissioner Thompson.
Sorry, I thought you couldn't. Pardon me for interrupting, please. If you could go back a couple of slides when you're looking at our alternatives, please. There we go. This BIOP overview. Commissioner Yamamoto from Tillamook County has been talking about this issue for over a year. He characterized it as the weaponizing of FEMA as the enforcement tool. And so he's been going to NACO and to other national organizations in order to say, "Take us out of the crosshairs." So I think another bullet point under this would be to collaborate with our partner counties and look at what concerted action we can take at the state and national levels to collaborate, because what we're looking at is holding human activity as the only dimension that we can modify, when what we're looking at is the impact of climate change, for example, on endangered species. And so to, I guess, I'd call it a squeeze play rather than necessarily weaponizing, but what we're talking about is people aren't even going to be able to maintain and restore the development that already exists. So that means, in my mind at least, that what we're looking at is the gradual extinction of human activity within this area. And I find that very problematic. I do think we have alternatives, and I'd like us to consider those. Thank you.
Commissioner Thompson. Years ago, a coalition that was formed that recognized the, you know, the impacts of this, and I think there was a number of different home builders and jurisdictions that had kind of joined that effort. And I think that's something that I think we need to continue to explore as well, because this can keep you from putting the mailbox in on your property or whatever that activity might be. And then, you know, if you're in a levied area that just happens to be below the flood plain, yeah, you will, you know, be a non-conform use or whatever type of activity you want to do to improve the property will be prohibited. That's pretty scary, really, for a lot of people in East County, Cl辛 County, John Day area, Brown's me, a lot of ramifications for this.
Yeah, I agree.
Goes back to maybe, we had a meeting about that, and we talked about buffers and it's kind of like that self-fulfilling problem, characterizing land difference. All of a sudden, the area that you cannot do anything, that it cannot touch, starts growing, if you, by increasing buffers, by changing habitats, you're actually creating more... Naturally, so... Choosing has to be... We need to... More.
I think to Commissioner Yamamoto's point too, as well, why is FEMA getting into the business of ESA and all of these other issues? That's not what their sole mission is.
I'd be favorable to adding to that list, collaborating with our neighboring county.
Out of my fifth bullet point.
Excellent. Coastal counties, yeah, the Coastal Caucus potentially.
If I might check where the members of the Board, I think, you know, this is a wide-ranging impact area, so I think like NACO and other, and the federal lobbying, and, I mean, it's going to take a lot of different levers to have an impact on the outcome.
Yeah.
Okay. So just quickly to take us around the county, this is out in Westport, where we do have some areas, this is a shallow flooding area. This is the Miles Crossing-Jeffers Garden area, which is almost completely within the 100-year flood plain, and that's where we have a lot of our commercial and industrial development right now. Potentially, this would also prohibit partitioning or subdivision of properties if the new lot is completely in the flood plain. And as you can see, this would also halt potentially partitioning of land out in that area for residential development. This is the Cannon Beach Junction along Highway 101, where it merges into Highway 26. You can see that a lot of that is in the flood plain, and again, there, and the floodway. And there are, again, also a lot of businesses out there. This is the coastal high hazard area in Arch Cape. And then this is Brown's me, which Chair Quayle had just mentioned. And so with the changes that are most likely to come, as Commissioner Thompson pointed out, this is going to affect new development, redevelopment, and replacement of structures. So as farmers get ready to replace barns or equipment sheds or things like that, they are going to be running into, you either avoid the impact, you minimize the impact, or you mitigate for the impact. And so that will have an effect out on the east part of the county. The Wana Mill has some areas that are in the 100-year flood plain as well. Westport, where we've built our new park, is in the flood plain, but luckily, the sewer plant is not, so that is good news, at least. Our Public Works Facility out on Olney has area of flood plain on it. And so to touch on the jurisdictions, even though any rules we adopt will cover just the unincorporated area, all the cities are going to have to go through this process. So I just wanted to quickly kind of point out how they're going to be looking if this moves forward. A story itself is not too bad. Most of it is literally high and dry, but the waterfront areas, the port areas, will be caught up in this. The city of Warrenton obviously has a lot of flood plain. Almost the entire airport is within the 100-year flood plain, except for that big blotchy star in the middle where the runways converge, and I'm not sure why that is, but there's a close-up of it. Gear Hard as well is caught kind of sandwiched, where they have the velocity zone on the west, and then they have the 100-year on the east side and along the creeks that run down 101. Same thing pretty much with the city of Seaside, except they have a lot more, and there are a lot of floodway. And then Cannon Beach is mainly velocity zone, so that's mainly along the oceanfront. So we talked about how this is going to affect everyone, and so sometimes we have received questions about, well, why can't the county just not participate or just not do this? And it does have some very significant ramifications if we don't toe the line, so to speak. Probably one of the biggest ones is that we lose our eligibility for federal disaster aid, which could be very huge for the county. It also impacts the sale of flood insurance policies. And so while many people may have inherited property, don't have a mortgage on it, they're not required to have flood insurance, a lot of our properties are mortgaged, and lenders do require the flood insurance, and so that would have a significant impact as well. If for some reason we didn't come into compliance in a reasonable timeframe, the FEMA can put a $50 surcharge on those flood insurance policies, and ultimately, they could just suspend us from the program completely. And again, that would prohibit flood insurance policies from being issued here. So as I've, I think everybody knows and understands, this is going to be very expensive. It's either going to prohibit development, most likely, or it's going to become very cost prohibitive for the property owners who do want to develop, or the jurisdictions who want to develop. There's also the potential for lawsuits, either because we have permitted something and then someone files a lawsuit claiming it, with a takings claim, saying we have taken a species, or conversely, the property owners could sue us for taking a property, right? We are encouraged to go beyond the minimum requirements, and there are ways to do that through the community rating system. And if you do that, you can actually save your policyholders some money by doing that, but that would be something that your Board would need to discuss. And again, this will not affect existing structures, but anything new or replaced. We have some reporting requirements that will come along with it as well, and I highlighted the ones that are probably beyond the capacity of staff to figure out, and so we are going to have to rely on property owners to submit this information, which means someone would likely have to hire an engineer to do these computations and include them on an application Again, we've talked about who's going to be impacted, and we really just don't know what the fiscal impacts might be. If you start taking development rights away from property owners, I don't know how that will impact assessment values, and so that's another thing that we need to consider. And then finally, taking a look at next steps. Again, we're not asking for any direction today. This is just informational presentation only. But again, we don't know exactly when this is going to kick in. It could be within the next two years, it might be five years, which will go by very, very quickly. And again, once that NEPA review is done, it's possible that within 18 months, we have to start implementing these requirements. And so I didn't include the counties down here on my list of next steps, but I did include the cities, because one thing we might want to start having discussions about is, do we want to do some land swaps so that we can swap flood areas in cities out for county land that might be drier, that would allow them to continue to build housing and commercial areas, because we are going to need those, we obviously need the housing? And then also begin talking with FEMA itself, just to see what we could do with the cities, and we can include the coastal counties as well, but how we can collaborate and figure out how maybe we can provide mitigation in the unincorporated areas that can be used to assist the cities as they move forward with their development options. And, oh, that's my presentation. So again, really just for information purposes only, but I'm here to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Bangs.
So just a quick question. I know that you laid out this process could take a number of years, and that after they decide, and it's an additional 18 months of compliance, is there at any point in an identified timeframe where we, as a county, can weigh in with our thoughts regarding the consequences of this into the NEPA process for public?
There will be, there's always a public comment with the NEPA process. They have not, they being FEMA, have not submitted yet, so I don't know when that will be, but there will be an opportunity for public comment.
Is there an opportunity to submit comment to FEMA prior to them submitting their plan, their...
I don't think they have a formal public comment period open at this point, but you can certainly always email FEMA, just like people email us and your Board. But, yeah, I think maybe the NEPA process, because this final implementation plan is really the result of a lot of public input over the past probably 10 years.
Can you speak to accreditation of a levy and how that would impact the mapping?
I cannot at this time, but I can find information and get that back to your Board.
Okay. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Webb.
Thank you, Chair Quayle. Actually, you just asked my question, you just asked my first question, because I just can't imagine, you know, as we're dealing with our levy system, that there isn't some other issue here that we need to be considering. And secondly, I'm sorry, I came in late, I just drove 200 miles up the coast. And I was just at a conference with a few other counties. Have we talked to AOC about this? Have we talked to the Coastal Caucus about it? I've been with David Gombert for the last two days. I wish I hadn't, you know, known a little bit more about this to talk about. So have, has anybody talked to AOC or to any of our neighboring coastal counties?
Thank you.
Is somebody going to answer my question?
I'm answering your question, Commissioner Webb. This has been raised often at AOC. We haven't had a concerted activity as a county, but this is what I'm asking for now. Because it hadn't come before our body, I've simply listened and waited for us to be involved in this, I would call it a doomsday scenario. So now I think we are ready to begin to collaborate more effectively about this. And to Commissioner Bang's question about when to intervene, I think it's important, as soon as possible, that we make a concerted effort at AOC and with our Coastal Caucus. I don't know how much can be affected in the next month. It probably makes sense to wait until the dust settles, but I agree with your point that this is something where we need to be acting in concerted ways with other impacted county leaders. Thank you.
Okay. Can I ask my next question, which was, have we talked to Representative Bonamici's office about this?
I don't know that we have. I know that you don't...
Chair Quayle, members of the Board, Commissioner Webb, we have not. We, this is our first kind of volley at the staff level, is to talk to your Board about what the impacts might be and what the process is. And so, I mean, part of what I mentioned earlier, and you may not have been on the call at the time, Commissioner, was that, you know, this is going to take, you know, federal legislative, you know, pushing, it's going to take NACO, and it's going to take a lot of different, you know, hands into the effort. And so I think, you know, some of that, some of those conversations have been had, if you look at it from a broad brush, but I think now it'll become much more focused as we move forward.
Okay, thank you.
And I, yeah, to the discussion earlier too, we talked about Commissioner Yamamoto, and there have been a number of coalitions that have been raising the, kind of the, raising the alarm bell, ringing the alarm bell, I guess we would say, on this for a period of time. So it is time to kind of join forces on the impacts of this. And Representative Bonamici is going to be in town on Monday, so this will be something I can talk to her just briefly about. She's going to be at the hospital for a presentation on the landslide grant that the city of Astoria has received. Any other questions, comments? Commissioner Toyoaka?
Thank you. You know, it's been brought up before, you know, like even stating that, you know, we're weaponized FEMA at this point, taking FEMA outside their roles and responsibilities, that's why I think we need to emphasize, we need AOC, we need NACO, we need Coastal Caucus, and we need involvement now instead of waiting, because if you're changing the role of an agency to adjust to an agenda or something, I don't know. There has to be something in the process that was deviated from that has to be brought back.
It always starts with litigation, so they're always responding to a lawsuit, it seems like, on these. Any other comments, questions? Thank you very much, Gail.
Thank you.
Appreciate the presentation. And we'll move on to the next item, which is the strategic plan review. It's on page 36 of our agenda. I'll turn it over to our county manager.
Thank you, Chair Quayle, members of the Board. I also have a presentation that I'm going to go through. I think you have it, Tom. So while Tom brings it up, strategic planning is something, as your Board knows, that we've been placing an emphasis on for a number of years, and so not surprisingly, it is an annual process that we continually come back to and discuss. And as part of the engineering and design of the process, we anticipate starting it now, and then we get through to what your priorities might be for the '23-'24 fiscal year, identify those so that then we can make sure that those are then represented in the county budget process. And so we're here to talk to you as kind of a first, first discussion, and part of this is really just updating the Board on what our progress has been to date. And since we don't have it on, I'm just going to talk, sorry about that. So you'll have to watch me and... But a strategic plan really is a roadmap. It's a... It defines the county's vision and mission and our values, and then it guides coordinated efforts of both elected officials and staff. And from the county manager's seat, it's important that there is a, there is an alignment between what county staff is working on and, and what the board's priorities are. And so, so that's what we do. We match priorities, we adapt to, to the community needs, and then we have transparency. People know what, what we are working on. So we, every three to five years, we will update the vision, mission, guiding values. We're not there yet, or this is, will be our, our third year, I believe. So we're still going forward with the current mission values. There's five focus areas that have been the categories that the county sticks the, the actual task in, and that it has included governance, infrastructure, economic development, environmental quality, and social services. And through that, there's a lot of different tasks. So I'm going to pass it to, um, to Amanda real quick, as she kind of walks through this cycle that I just mentioned, and what some of the timelines are for some of our upcoming work.
Good evening, board. Um, for the record, Amanda Rappincheck, Management Policy Analyst. This would be on, in your packet, page 46. And so this is the strategic planning process. It's just providing that overview. You'll see it's outlined through the fiscal year, so that's July 1 through June 30th. That first part is just showing that this implementation process happens throughout. There's no break in that timeline. And then the main difference between those next two components in terms of annual process and every three to five years, is that annually, we're looking at reviewing and updating fiscal year priorities, but the three to five year process is a much more in-depth review, and that would be looking at, um, the vision, mission, guiding values, focus areas, and would essentially result in a new strategic plan. And then the final part, just at the bottom, shows how it's tied to the fiscal budget annual calendar.
So when I look at our progress over the last two years, which is, the first year was 21, 22, and then 22, 23, and this is on page 48 and 49 of your document, you know, we've made a lot of progress on a lot of the board's priorities. I'm just going to read through some of them. We have the strategic planning process, we have a communications team, we have updated board rules, we have issued county surplus land for affordable housing, we have a housing dashboard, we're working actively on broadband. The North Coast Business Park has gone through a PSA. We have funded the Arts Council. There's been work done on, on, on Water Needs Forum, as well as the No Trace Tourism Program. We've done a space study, which we'll be bringing to, to your board in the next month or so. Childcare, we're moving forward with, with, with childcare, and a lot of progress there. And then we had the support to the navigation systems and the Mobile Crisis Services, which both have been expanded. For this fiscal year, where we're sitting right now, we've been working on an actual communications plan, a sustainability framework. We're working on the transient lodging tax legislation for fiscal impacts of, of tourism analysis. The sheriff is leading a consolidated 911 process. We transferred property to seaside, we continue to work on the solid waste franchise. And then again, project turnkey is going to be a big one, you know, for us also. So when you, when I think about it, we've really hit on those key topical areas that the board ha, has been raising, and as the community has been raising. And so now, you know, that process continues. It's, it is what's next up. And again, we're not done with all the 22, 23 priorities yet, but we're making really good progress on those. And so what we'll be doing now is kind of walking through what the next several months are going to look like as we go towards the January goal of having the updated 23, 24 projects, task lists, so that we can give that to departments and then budget for whatever those, those priorities are. So I'll just let Amanda kind of go through that real quick.
And then can you put to the next one? Yeah, so this is the last slide, and it's just outlining, uh, and going through. And so the first one, check mark, we did it, strategic plan review. The next process will, I'll be providing a survey to board, staff, and stakeholders. And then the survey results will be provided to you in a report, which will then be reviewed and discussed during the first strategic planning retreat, which right now we have scheduled for December 7th. Following that will be a board survey in which commissioners will identify the desired priorities after having that discussion. Staff will continue, or will draft the survey results, and then we'll have the second strategic planning retreat, go through those priorities. And the second one is going to be in January, and then we'll be drafting the amendment to, which will be the fiscal year priorities for 23, 24.
So, you know, what I would say is, at least from the county manager's chair, you can go ahead, Tom, if you don't mind turning off the presentation so we can see the board, but, is that the process has been working well, but of course, we're always open to, to, to board feedback about the process itself. But it's been a very valuable tool to me as we have been working within the organization. Now, I would love to say that this represents all of the things that county staff is working on, but, as we know, that's not the case. It's actually a small fraction of what we are doing. But as I said, it's really important that we're working on the things that the board wants to move on. And so it's not all-inclusive, but hopefully it hits some of those priority areas. So, um, so we just wanted to let you know what's coming down the pipe, give you the opportunity to give any direction about the process, but it'll be very similar to the previous years. Thank you, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
I appreciate the process. I mean, allows for us in the individual districts, our constituents come to us with concerns and the things that they want to be addressed in the county, and put it into the strategic plan, and, you know, and it gets addressed. So we're actually responsive to the needs of the community. It's a great process.
Commissioner Thompson has a question.
Well, no, it's actually a comment, and to echo what Commissioner Toyoka says, number one, it is responsive to constituents. Number two, it has our definition, our collective definition of our priorities, and then immediately thereafter, the integration into the budget. So that's a really profoundly important linkage. I appreciate that. In terms of the county manager's workload, the metaphor I used today was going to the batting cages. I don't know if anybody else has ever gone to the batting cages. Person stands up there with a baseball bat, and a machine fires a ball at the plate. So you try and hit it. The county manager has like 40 priorities, so he and his staff have like 40 machines shooting balls at them that they're trying to hit. So I appreciate the capacity of staff, I appreciate their grace, and I celebrate their accomplishments. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I think that was really well put, Commissioner Thompson. We do appreciate all that our staff has done over the last year, and made a lot of progress on all of these goals and priorities as part of the strategic plan. So thank you, you know, Don and Amanda, and the entire staff for, for all your efforts. And it is true, I mean, it'd be one thing if you could just focus solely on the strategic plan and implement all of these activities, but you're having to put out fires half the other half the time, so it does make it challenging.
And if, if I might, Chair Quayle, members of the board, is I, I do just want to just affirm the amazing contribution staff make every day.
Yeah.
I have the commitment, the work ethic, the compassion, the drive to succeed, the drive to do things the right way, in a common sense way, is just appreciated to, to the end, because we couldn't do this work without that kind of common sense-driven notion of the work, and just the commitment to public service. So, you know, it's a pleasure to work with, with the staff that the county has, so.
Yeah, thank you, Don. Commissioner Banks?
I just had a quick comment. You know, our progress is very visual, especially childcare being one of the ones that I'm primarily focused on. And I'll be honest, I love the strategic plan process, because we could measure how well we're doing. And the impact can be seen not just here at this table, but out in our community. And again, there's an appreciation, obviously, for county manager and staff, because none of this would be accomplished without, without you guys. And I, I'm just a fan of the strategic, I am, I like it. It's good, all good things.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you very much. We don't have any other items on our work session, so we'll go ahead and take a 20-minute break, and we'll get started at 6 o'clock. Thanks. Everybody? And are we recording? Perfect. All right, we'll call this meeting order. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty, peace, and justice for all.
All right, welcome, everybody. Tom, can we have the roll call?
Chair Quayle?
Here.
Vice Chair Thompson?
I'm here.
Commissioner Toyoka?
Here.
Commissioner Webb?
Here.
Commissioner Bangs?
Here.
All right, we've had an opportunity to kind of review the agenda. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the agenda this evening? If not, we'll need a motion.
Move to approve the agenda as written.
Second.
Moving second to approve the agenda, all those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. We'll move now to the proclamations. We've got two proclamations this evening. Our first is the Great Shake, the Great Shakeout Day proclamation. So we'll turn it over to our Emergency Management Director, Justin Gibbs. Justin?
Chair Commissioners, Justin Gibbs, Emergency Management Director. I appear before you this evening in recognition of Great Shakeout Day. On October 20th at 10:20 a.m., millions of people will practice how to drop cover and hold on during Great Shakeout drills. To provide a little background, Shakeout began in California in 2008, and now has more than 40, 40 million participants each year across the U.S. and in many countries worldwide. Each third Thursday of October each year is International Shakeout Day. However, the drill may be held on any day of the year. Great Shakeout participation provides individuals, neighborhoods, and agencies with the opportunity to evaluate emergency plans, increase awareness of earthquake safety among their environment, and improve resiliency with the broader community. Each year, Clatsop County registers as a local government organization and encourages all employees to participate in some fashion. Event registration has steadily increased across the county in recent years, with 3,930 people signed up in 2021, and 2,100 plus having registered this year already. Participating in the Shakeout is a great way for individuals, families, and organizations in Clatsop County to be prepared to survive and recover quickly from earthquakes wherever you live, work, or travel. So for those who haven't already registered, please visit shakeout.org/oregon. And please stay tuned to the county's press releases as we have a couple of events. Dogami will actually be doing a couple of presentations on the new tsunami maps in preparation for, for Shakeout Day. So I think they, that should be released maybe tomorrow, when those will be taking place. So that concludes my prepared remarks. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Director Gibbs, and congratulations on a successful event last Saturday out at Camp Reilina. The Get Ready event had a great turnout. There were a lot of people there, both vendors and folks participating from throughout the county, so great job putting that together, and looking forward to the next one.
Thank you so much.
Lot of good information there. Any other questions, comments?
I have, uh-
Commissioner Webb?
Another congratulations. I don't know how closely involved you've been in it, but the resurrection of our search teams at the local level has been very cool to watch. So that's, I mean, they were dormants, really, for quite a long time, so.
Yeah, thank you. All right, anything else? If not, we need a, a motion.
I move to approve the resolution and order proclaiming October 20th to be Great Shakeout Day, and authorize the chair to sign and then read the proclamation.
I can that. It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution and order proclaiming October 20th to be Great Shakeout Day, and authorize the chair to read and then sign the proclamation. All those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. In the matter of proclaiming October 20th, 2022, to be Great Shakeout Day in Clatsop County, whereas the proximity of Clatsop County's coastline to the offshore Cascadia Subduction Zone make it vulnerable to local earthquakes and tsunamis, and whereas Clatsop County has no greater responsibility than ensuring the safety of its citizens and all of those who visit our county, and whereas Clatsop County Emergency Management partners with federal, state, local, tribal, territorial, private, and volunteer agencies to educate individuals on local hazards and how to prepare for them, and whereas earthquake safety is a serious concern with our entire county at risk through seismic shaking and tsunami hazards, and whereas the best way to survive a natural disaster is to develop a preparedness plan for one's home, school, business, and family, and whereas being self-sufficient for at least two weeks after a natural disaster, as well as the knowledge of what to do when disasters occur, is vital. All citizens, businesses, and governmental agencies are encouraged to participate in earthquake drills, where they practice drop, cover, and hold on on Great Shakeout Day. Now therefore be it resolved that the Clatsop County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims October 20th, 2022, to be Great Shakeout Day in Clatsop County, and encourage all citizens to join in this observance by increasing their earthquake resilience and working toward great, creating a more prepared society. Dated this 12th day of October, 2022. Signed by the Board of Clatsop County Commissioners. Thank you very much, Director Gibbs. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our next item is proclamation to oppose the draft of the Western Oregon State Forest Habitat Conservation Plan. I'll go ahead and give a brief introduction to this, I think. First of all, back in, I think, starting in November of 2018, the Board of Forestry directed the Department of Forestry staff to start work on a Western Oregon State Forest Habitat Conservation Plan. They've been working on this draft ever since. It's to describe the potential effects of federally listed species that might be at risk during, to forest management activities that include timber harvest and management, habitat restoration, and construction and maintenance of recreational forests over a 70-year permit term. I think this proclamation speaks to the fact that we felt, feel that the HCP was not prepared in partnership with local officials, and it has several severe financial impacts on local taxing jurisdictions, including the county school districts, rural fire districts, healthcare districts, and law enforcement. So due to the lack of our, I guess, official participation in the creation of this, and the disproportionate impact it has on local taxing jurisdictions and the economy, the Board of Commissioners opposes the current version of the HCP and asks the state to reengage in a truly collaborative process to engage the, to create a HCP that will protect, will truly protect the environment, local economies, and the social fabric of our communities, and the ability for rural county school districts and schools, and special districts to be financially sustainable and continue to provide the essential services they need to and service levels now and into the future. So- So, um, that's the introduction. Does anybody else here, um, on the dais want to make any comments?
I can, just briefly.
Any, any comments? Commissioner Webb?
I, I think this is an inappropriate use of our proclamation powder. Um, I think that, um, our proclamations are usually, um, focused on very positive issues, um, discussing, um, uh, discussing things that, that we want to bring to the public's attention. Um, I don't think, I just don't think it's an appropriate use of our proclamation. Um, I, I agree with almost every word of it, but I think that it's our responsibility, um, not just to shout this from the mountaintop, but to work very closely with state government to remedy this, these, these issues that arisen, that have arisen in the HCP. I think I have said this before, that to me, the issue, uh, is not so much, uh, objecting to the HCP, which I think is a, but I think it's objecting to the structure of the way we, um, we, uh, pay for so many of our local government services in Oregon that we need to have a, a, and, um, do it as a sentiment.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Webb. Mr. Thompson, did I see your hand up or? Mr. Thompson?
Well, I'd, I'd happily yield to Commissioner Banks if she has a comment to make because she's been most intimately involved with this, and speak after her.
Commissioner Banks?
Um, just having been involved in this process for the last two years and have been, uh, the, you know, pretty, pretty blunt with my, uh, thoughts regarding the negative impact, uh, that it's going to have on our community with the Board of Forestry and engaging with the Board of Forestry on a regular basis and also with ODF on a regular basis in regards to the negative impacts that it's going to have on our community and also in regards to multiple, offering multiple ways where we could all at the table be a winner, um, highlighting situations where, um, just with a little bit of wordsmithing, we could have a totally different outcome and often feeling, um, actually, no, often having those thoughts rejected, uh, at the ODF and Board of Forestry level, uh, and it has been a frustrating experience over the last two years. And I feel like that this is a very well-timed proclamation because it, with the Board of Forestry coming to Seaside here next month, um, I feel like this is our chance as a community, as a county, to speak up and say, we can do better. Um, and we can do better in a manner that does not completely sabotage our social services. And we can do better in the manner of, in a situation that does not completely sabotage, um, job opportunities in our community. And so, I, I personally think that, you know, hopefully, hopefully this assists, um, the Board of Forestry in their decision-making, uh, in their upcoming decision-making and gives us a chance as a community, as, as a county to say, we can do better. And this, this HCP, um, is devastating. Uh, none of us here are against the premise of an HCP and the purpose. We are against how this one is written.
Thank you, Commissioner Banks.
I'll add too.
Uh, yeah, let me give Commissioner Toyoka an opportunity to speak and then, uh, Commissioner Webb, you can ask a question. Commissioner Toyoka?
I was just to add to Commissioner Banks that, you know, if Council Forest Land Trust brought up, you know, data, you know, and science that stated what's been going on for 35 years is not working. You know, they have the historical data, they have the information on the species, they have information on wildfires. And to me, you know, I'm not a forest engineer, but to do the same thing for another 70 is kind of the definition of insanity, doing the same thing. But to that point, the HCP needs to be looked at it in a different manner. And I, and I don't understand the agenda that was taken to come up with this, to do the same thing again. I don't. Um, but it, there has to be some scientific basis to make a change for the positive. Yes, we, we agree there is a necessity for habitat conservation, but obviously how it's been going and how they're proposing it is not working, did not work. We have data. Um, and then the economic impacts were never addressed. And I think the overriding principle too is that they didn't, you know, adequately provide input from those affected communities, and I think that's essential. They're supposed to represent the people of Oregon, and I don't think they have in this case.
Thank you, Commissioner Toyoka. Commissioner Webb, you had a question?
Yeah, I thought that we, um, essentially wrote this proclamation as a letter to the, to ODF. Did that happen?
Uh, Chair Quayle, members of the board, um, this proclamation really mirrors the letter that was sent as part of the Noah Nipa process. And so, and-
We did do that.
Yes, and that was submitted as, as part of the public comment period.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I've been listening to the Board of Forestry meetings the whole eight years I've been, uh, almost eight years. I've been a county commissioner. Actually, I started going before I was sworn in, so yes, eight full years. And what I've seen in that is the need to redefine the state's relationship with its constituent counties. To that end, I raised that issue in several policy committees at the Association of Oregon County meetings last week and again on Monday. So, at the Legislative Committee and the Board Meeting of AOC, it met with unanimous approval that the body made AOC's number-one priority to redefine the county's relationship with the state. We are by law the agents of the state, not just some random stakeholder. And as I said, my mom was a redhead, so with all respect to redheads, we are nobody's red-haired stepchild here. We should be honored, we should be collaborated because we are where the services really happen on the ground. We are accountable as a general-purpose organization. We are not a special interest. We should be working tongue-in-groove with the state, we should be collaborated with. I've watched Commissioner Banks raise cogent questions about the methodology, about the process, about the product. Those have been disregarded. What has seemed to be the predominant issue is how does the State Department of Forestry avoid further lawsuits? So the element has been coercion with the legalistic tool. Let's not do coercive tactics. I appreciate Commissioner Webb's comment. Is this an appropriate use of adding an exclamation point to what we are saying as the governing body of Clatsop County, the agents of the state, the ones who are accountable to the people who live and work and own businesses here? Yes, I think it is. I think we should go forward with it. I'm fully in support of it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Banks?
Um, and just to follow up, uh, thank you, Commissioner Thompson, for being my backup in those meetings and consistently following up. But I also wanted to highlight that it has been said in many public meetings that Clatsop County is going to be impacted the most deeply of all of the trustland counties. And it has been a repeated call, request by both, uh, Commissioner Yamamoto of Tillamook and also of myself to be able to be an active participant, um, in the policies, the policies being structured. And we have been repeatedly denied that opportunity to participate. Um, and so I just wanted to add a little extra exclamation point at the end of Commissioner Thompson's statement that we, we, there is no, we are endlessly trying, um, to circumvent what I see as a devastating, uh, result.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Banks. Before we go to a vote on the proclamation, I just wanted to read some of what the estimated fiscal impacts are. Modeling suggests a reduction in timber revenues that would equate to a loss of 2.7 million to 3.4 million dollars for Clatsop County and an additional 4.5 million to 5.7 million to other taxing districts. That, so the total, uh, impact to county local government is estimated to be 7.2 million to 9.1 million per year. That's big numbers. Commissioner Banks?
And a, a quick follow-up to that number is that does not talk about our secondary and tertiary job loss. So, just to put another exclamation behind that.
True. Okay, are we ready for a vote?
I would move to approve the resolution and order opposing the current draft of the Western Oregon State Forest Habitat Conservation Plan and authorize the chair to read then sign the proclamation.
Second.
Move and seconded to approve the resolution and order opposing the current draft of the Western Oregon, uh, State Forest Habitat Conservation Plan and authorize the chair to read then sign the proclamation. All those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Uh, Tom, can we have a roll call vote?
Chair Quayle?
Aye.
Uh, Vice Chair Thompson?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Toyoka?
Aye.
Commissioner Webb?
Nay.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. In the matter of opposing the draft of the Western Oregon State Forest Habitat Conservation Plan, whereas the Clatsop County Board of Commissioners represents over 40,000 residents who rely upon county, city, school district, and other special districts for essential public services, and whereas timber-generated revenues are distributed to eligible taxing districts in an amount of more than $24 million per year in Clatsop County alone, including approximately $9 million for Clatsop County and county service districts, and whereas timber revenues comprise the second-largest source of Clatsop County discretionary revenue exceeding $5 million per year and partially fund the essential and priority services of our public safety and justice system, elections, assessment and taxation, and other critical inert, internal services, and whereas timber revenues are allocated to other Clatsop County districts including rural law enforcement, rural district number one, state lands enforcement, extension 4-H, and fairgrounds in an amount of approximately $3.5 million per year, and whereas the projected 30% to 38% range for the reduction in timber revenues due to implementation of the current draft of the Western Oregon State Forest Habitat Conservation Plan, HCP, equates to a net loss of 2.7 to 3.4 million dollars per year for Clatsop County and 4.5 million to 5.7 million loss to other taxing jurisdictions for a total estimated reduction of 7.2 million to 9.1 million in local government revenues. Whereas the county and other taxing jurisdictions will be unable to replace this revenue loss at the local level, services and service levels will be predictably eliminated or reduced. These service reductions will have negative impacts on the public health, safety, and sustainability of our community for generations to come. Whereas Clatsop Care Health District, a publicly, publicly-funded senior care agency, rural fire departments, and school districts are subject to service and program reductions that desperately impact the most vulnerable in our community. Whereas there is longstanding evidence that passive approaches to forest management greatly increases accumulations of ground fuels, ladder fuels, and canopy closures, and thereby contributes to the risk of catastrophic-scale wildfires. Whereas the process of developing the policy and provisions of the HCP did not allow county input and representation in the manner that the county requested, and whereas the Clatsop County Board of Commissioners is committed to an HCP that balances environmental, economic, and social factors, including impacts to local government finances and service delivery, and whereas the draft HCP does not currently reflect a balanced consideration of these factors. Now therefore, the Clatsop County Board of Commissioners resolve to oppose the draft of the Western Oregon State Forest Habitat Conservation Plan and ask the Department of Forestry and other state agencies to re-engage in a collaborative process to create an HCP that will protect the environment, our local economies, the social fabric of our communities, and the ability for rural cities, counties, school districts, and special districts to be financially sustainable and continue to provide essential services and service levels now and into the future. Dated this 12th day of, of October, 2022, the Board of Clat, County Commissioners for Clatsop County, Oregon. And, uh, appreciation to our county manager and county, uh, commission that have worked very hard on putting that together. Thanks so much. I will go ahead and move on to our next item, which is Business from the Public. So this is an opportunity for anyone to give a two-minute presentation about any item on the agenda, except for public hearings or any topic of county concern that is not an agenda item. Tom, you're filling in for the clerk of the board tonight, so has any member of the public signed up to speak remotely? Has anybody signed up to speak remotely?
We, uh, do have a number of people who did register to speak, uh, either in person here, uh, or remotely. Uh, I don't know if everyone who signed up has filled out a card, but I do have their names here and can call them off, uh, if you like.
Sure. So please wait until you're called on, then give your name and address for the record. You'll have two minutes to speak. I'll go ahead and-
Okay, and I believe, uh, with us remotely, um, Jan Songer, if you'd like to, uh, speak. Give your name and address for the record.
Thank you. I'm Jan Songer. My address is 82082 Cal Creek Road in Seaside. And I appreciate the opportunity to make a comment, and I, I'm here because I'd like to, uh, state that I'm very concerned that our election ballot counting machines are not certified. Apparently, they haven't been for some time. And we really, I, I'd like to let you know that it's very important that we stop using the machines and we go to in-person, paper voting immediately. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jan.
Uh, Virginia Hall?
Tom, a question for the next caller. Is there a volume we can pump up?
Is there a way we can boost the audio because it is very-
Pretty weak.
Okay.
There's another one, too.
Oh.
Okay. Okay, Virginia, if you could state your name and address for the record?
Virginia Hall, 92192 Clover Road. I conclude as a result of my research and that of other election integrity experts throughout the nation and the state that the private information of the voters has been compromised and that our ballots can identify us through the QR codes and bar codes printed on the ballots and envelopes. Running our ballots through the scanners or tabulator machines will cause and allow our identities to be misappropriated and is as a result of allowing machine tabulation to be done, a premeditation permission by the county for identity theft. Our data in the voter rolls and through DMV registration includes our driver's license record with our signatures and complete birth date. All of that is also compromised. When the tabulator reads the ballots, it reads the QR code and the information is immediately accessible to nefarious actors and poof, our identity is stolen. Some citizens have decided their only recourse to the QR code is to physically cut it out of their ballot. Election experts have told me that it is used by the printers to match the ballot to the envelope. Imagine the consternation of our ballot processors if only 500 people cut the QR code out of their ballot, which would require duplication during the May primary. Duplication took between four and eight minutes per ballot. And imagine the consternation of the voters if during duplication their votes were accidentally changed. The only way we can safely vote in the 2020 gr, general election is with a hand count of the ballot. The very agents of the state and county governments that swear an oath to uphold the United States Constitution have encumbered, disrupted, obstructed, and outright denied access of the, of the people to public records, refused to investigate findings from election canvassers, and impugn the reputation of an election integrity-minded citizen.
Okay, thank you, Virginia.
Thank you.
Next is Kelly Shipley? No, we're just doing two minutes per person.
All right. Kelly Shipley, uh, 9-
Kelly Shipley, nine-one-nine-zero-five Ridge Road, Warrenton, Oregon. Along with that, there's also DMV registering people who aren't even here legally. They're getting ballots. There's ballots, the voter rolls have not been properly cleaned up. I don't even know if it's even possible to clean the voter rolls thoroughly. And since one ballot can change the outcome of an election, it's really important that we have this right. Ballots are going out to people who have died, who moved away, and then they're being returned to the post office. The post office does not have a secure place for those ballots. They can be stolen, they can be sort, and then even the ballots on the way to the post office, ballots are marked on the outside. You can tell, with a little bit of research, you can find out whether the ballot is a Republican or a Democrat. They can be pre-stored before they even get to here. And then there's the ballot boxes. As I told some of you, it's like I was picking up, I stood by a ballot box, November eighth, eight PM, and I asked, I wanted to see how this was done. And then the ladies who were picking up the ballots told me, oh, well, we just take them and we dump them into that tote right there. They were going to dump them into an open container and transport them that way. Why didn't they know that? And I said, that doesn't sound right. Shouldn't they be sealed with numbered zip ties or something? Should they be in a sealed container for transport? And then they got really mad at me for even questioning that. Well, how much time do I got?
Thirty seconds.
There's, and then the voting machine, it's the tabulator is supposed to be air-gapped. All of you have telephones that are air-gapped. How well does that work? Is that secure? They're supposed to, so the machines can't, they can be reached through Wi-Fi, or, and then they can also be reached and tampered with through thumb drives. We don't have any guarantees that this is not being done, and they should no longer be used. We should go to in-person voting and have them counted by hand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Next is Jason Olson.
This also has to do with the voting.
Name and address for the record.
Jason Olson, four-two-five-four-nine Highway thirty, Astoria. Unfortunately, not all vendors or jurisdictions following established best practices will respect the development, maintenance, and operations of voting systems. This makes them all vulnerable to cyber manipulation than they need to be. Several factors affect a bad actor's ability to compromise the system. Number one, how well the system was designed. Number two, whether the system is properly configured and updated. Number three, how well the system is managed and operated. And number four, the skills, resources, and determination of the would-be attacker. Adoption of best practices for developing, testing, and management of systems can reduce, but not eliminate, the risk of a successful cyber attack.
Great, thank you, Jason.
Yep.
Do we have anybody else that's signed up, Tom?
Uh, we do. Lisa Lamping?
I'm Lisa Lamping, address fifteen-seventeen Southwest Luke Avenue in Warrenton. So, Dear Clatsop County Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to address the commission. As we all know, our nation, we have become aware of voter integrity issues. Some acknowledge it and others do not, but there's compelling enough evidence that we know that not all things are as they should be. It may be small issues in one community and a significant issue in another. Regardless, we have proven, we have enough proven to have merit, and each claim needs to be investigated seriously. It's incumbent on our civic leadership to ensure that everything is done with the utmost care and above reproach. Any appearance of wrongdoing can undermine the trust and credibility of an organization, and our voting systems traditionally have relied heavily on trust. But that trust has been severely wrought into question with vote-by-mail and machine-tabulated elections. Recently, a lawsuit was filed against several counties in Oregon regarding the certification of the ES voting machines, which I believe is what we use in Clatsop County. It is part of the lawful voting process that these machines be certified before each election, and it appears this has not been done with the ES machines across the state of Oregon, including Clatsop County. Although the lawsuit doesn't name Clatsop County, it does name all ES voting machines in the field, which adds Clatsop to the discussion. Because of this, I would like to request that the commission use its authority to require the upcoming election be done by hand count and not use these ES machines again until they are properly certified. It's my understanding you have the authority to do this. I can't cite it, but I have a thought I read that somewhere. I hope you understand that the credibility of elections is crucial to our country, and we're simply wanting to ensure credibility and transparency is more important than just getting ballots tabulated quickly. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Lisa. Tom, do we have anybody else sign up for public comment?
Cindy Olson.
Cindy?
Cindy Olson, one-five-seven-nine South Mohana, Seaside. And a citizen's vote is a fundamental expression of the First Amendment. Votes are guaranteed equal protection under the U.S. Constitution. Maintaining the sanctity of each vote is a duty of local, state, and federal government agencies, and as the vigilance of the federal, state, and county and city election officials for updating voter confidence must be of the highest order. Unfortunately, the state, county, city election officials have consistently demonstrated a profound lack of courtesy for alleviating the negative impact of these anomalies on the confidence of the average voter. Voting is just so important. I know so many people concerned about what's going on with their lives, around their lives, and with their children in this country, and all, the only force we really have is our vote, and it's so important that each one is counted and there's no, that it's all there. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Tom?
Don Orahood.
Hi, how are you, guys?
Don, how are you?
Great, my name's Don Orahood. I'm at one-twenty-five Southwest Fourteenth Place in Warrenton. I'm really happy to be here, thank you for the opportunity to be here. I want to stress my concern over using the uncertified computers to tabulate our county votes in the 2022 midterm election. That's the use of the uncertified machines, as well as the means in which the information maintained, has come under suspicion nationally and statewide, and many lawsuits seem to be viable at this time. So, you guys have an amazing opportunity here to stand up as leaders and say, hey, we really want to protect our constituents and their vote. And just like you guys are contending for a voice for your previous issue that you were dealing with, with Clatsop County Forestry, all that, you know how important it is to have a voice and have your voice be heard and represented well, and we're just asking for the same thing. And there's so much suspicion right now with the computers, and if it's not certified, then that, something has fallen through the cracks, and it's, trust is broken at that level, just countywide. So, let us know what we can do to help you with that, but we want, many of us are here because we want to partner, we want our county to be a good county, and we voted you in, and we appreciate your leadership, and we partner with you on a lot of different things. So, I hope you'll partner with those of us concerned about the vote, because it impacts you guys most, being here as well. Thank you for your bravery, thank you for your leadership, we really do appreciate it, it's not easy. And so, we encourage you to lead our state and country in concerning the voter integrity and privacy concerns of all the people you represent in this county, please take the necessary steps to make sure every voter feels the vote is safe, counted, counted correctly, and reported correctly. You can do this by hand counting the vote and minimizing opportunities for disenfranchisement of your county constituents. Appreciate your honesty.
Thank you. Tom?
Erin Raditz.
Eight-seven Lane, thank you for letting me speak. Voter integrity is very important, it's important to all of us. I believe that only United States citizens should be allowed to vote. I don't know how you feel, but federally, that's the way it's supposed to be. I know Oregon doesn't always follow those rules. There's a new lawsuit that's been filed against Oregon Secretary of State in twelve counties, and it's really unique, because it's a class action lawsuit representing the voters of Oregon. Hope you'll follow it, it's important to not just the group here, but I'd say most of the citizens in our county, and we're so lucky to live here, really, let's make it right, let's do everything right, take it above board and have some integrity. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tom?
That was the names I was able to get ahold of right down, I don't know if there was anyone else who registered.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you want to give your name and address.
Deep Batches, thirteen-fifty-one Dooley Lane, Gearhart, Oregon. And I've been a resident of Gearhart for almost ten years, and glad to be part of this county. And I believe our voting system in Clatsop County is compromised due to the mail-in ballot system and machine counting. I am concerned about election integrity in this county, and I believe that in-person voting and hand-counting of ballots in Clatsop County would be a start to solving this major problem. Thank you all for your service to this community.
Thank you. Anyone else that's here that wanted to participate in public comment? But anybody virtually?
That's the only folks that signed up virtually.
All right, and just, I mean, to speak for not just myself, I think for my fellow county commissioners, election integrity is extremely important to us, it's extremely important to our staff, I know it's extremely important to our county clerk, Tracy Komenko, and I believe at our next worst session, we're going to have an opportunity to hear about all of the measures that we've put in place to make sure that elections are done with the highest of integrity. So, that will be next Wednesday at ten o'clock, so you're all invited to join in, it is a virtual meeting, so feel free to join online and hear what we're all doing in Clatsop County and make sure that this election is a secure one. So, thank you. Yep, yeah, it's also recorded, so you can watch it afterwards, too. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to the consent calendar, and you're welcome to stick around, or if you want to leave, you can do that now. See you, Lisa.
Mr. Chair, do you want to clarify to the audience that public comment isn't taken at that work session, just so that folks don't have the...
Yeah, just, yeah, just so everybody's clear, you know, we do, you know, this is the opportunity for public comment, we don't have public comment at our work sessions. Thank you, Commissioner Thompson, for that clarification. We'll move on to the consent calendar at this time, we had an opportunity to review the consent calendar, any questions or comments? Do we have a motion? Commissioner Bangs?
Um, well, I have a comment prior to a motion, and that's before we pass, well, not before we pass, but before we consider public input and conversation regarding number six on our consent calendar, I would like county staff to circle back and outline how we are going to be engaging the public in that process, mainly because that has been a topic on our strategic plan, and we've discussed it a lot, and so I would just like to know, prior to engaging the public on item number six, that we circle back and discuss it with the board before doing so. And so, with that caveat, I would move to, I don't need to amend it, but I would move to approve the consent calendar.
Commissioner Thompson?
Do we have a second?
Commissioner Thompson would second.
Okay, move and second to approve the consent calendar. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify with an "aye." Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to the commissioners' reports, I'll start with Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, as I said, I've been active at AOC to help, I want to say galvanize the membership so that county commissioners and judges have a more equitable and productive relationship with the state, with the executive branch, with the legislative branch going forward. I've seen in a variety of circumstances around issues that are vitally important to everyone, forestry, water, other kinds of issues that counties need to step up, and there seems to be, I would say, pretty unanimous support for that idea, so I'm excited about that going forward. I'm excited about the idea of the broadband project in mid-county. I think we're in the process of pivoting to a different community and institution that'll move that project forward. There's a lot of work to be done by the county manager in the meantime, and by the provider, but I think we're well-headed. The third thing I have, Mr. Chair, I got this dandy radio from the Medical Reserve Corps, and as soon as we get a little more equipment in place, Falcon Cove Beach, Arch Cape, will be able to be connected with a radio, with, altogether, with the Medical Reserve Corps folks that are in Cannon Beach and somewhere in Seaside and beyond, so that's very exciting to me. Thank you, Mr. Chair, that's my report.
Great news, thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Toyoka?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you. We had a great fair board meeting with Commissioner Bangs, but I will let her address that, because she is very passionate about the fair, but all I can say is that good things with the MOU and, I think, great progress to our beloved fair. The other thing is, I was going to bring up, is I get stopped a lot by people that happen to know I'm in the car business, and they ask me about our county's fleet, why are we not EV? Why are we not, you know, electrifying? Not a simple answer, it's, but I'll tell you one thing, there's a consortium of manufacturers and auto industry professionals, and the consensus is the world's not ready to fully support an electric fleet, many reasons why, but quote is, if we're to make dramatic progress in electrification, it will require overcoming tremendous challenges, including refueling infrastructure, battery availability, consumer acceptance, and affordability. So, you're looking at some states are mandating electric by 2035, and if I take one in particular, we're highlighting California, with just passenger vehicles alone, seventeen-point-seven million vehicles on the road right now, if we diverted every electric vehicle processed for America, it would not be attainable for California alone. And if other states try to mandate that, it's completely unattainable with, you know, and it's all about resources, about technology, so there's many factors in it, we don't have the infrastructure. You know, California said we'd have to, they'd have to, you know, not charge at night, because they don't have the infrastructure. So, there's many factors that need to be addressed, and I think, so why are we not electrifying right now? I think it's going to be a process, it's not overnight, it's not an instant fix. I think leaders who say we need to go by 2035 are kind of virtue signaling, they're trying to make a statement, but the reality is, yes, everybody wants to move towards different technology, everybody wants to, you know, have more cleaner technology, but it is a process, and I don't think 2035 is attainable. The other part of the story is the hybrid vehicles on the road today, which are quite a few, so those have our partial zero emissions. So, if we're looking at climate, we're looking at our environment, a hybrid... So if we're looking at climate, we're looking at our environment, a hybrid vehicle, much more affordable to the masses, you know, to purchase, you don't have to have the charging infrastructure, and the emissions are negligible when you're looking at the difference between EV and hybrids. So, I think we can, you know, opinion, stair-step. So maybe our, as a county, you know, my answer would be like, maybe we stair-step our approach to EV as well. You know, we look at hybrid, we look at different technologies to get us there, and, you know, affordability, you know, do we, can we as a county afford EV in one swoop? I wouldn't think so. We have so many priorities, you know, that that would not be feasible. And then they don't even have the commercial fleets available to us. So, I think, again, it's a great concept, but it'll be a stair-step approach, especially for this county level. Hope I have addressed some of the questions. And thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Toyoka. Commissioner Webb?
I'm going to defer my report. I just, I'm coming down off of a very long drive today. And a meeting that was wonderful from the Oregon Coast Visitors Association, and I need to get my head together about what I can share with you all.
Well, we're glad you were able to make it back, so, yeah.
And the other, the other thing is that NOHA is, has, Alyssa Gertler, the new director and I, we're gonna write a book together called Elevator Stories.
Oh, yeah.
The Astor Hotel elevator is not working, and they're a six-story building. So, anyway, lots of good things happening at NOHA. And actually, I'm hoping to talk our county manager into maybe asking our new executive director to come and meet the board and talk a little bit about some of our strategic planning that's still...
Yeah.
I will.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. Commissioner Bangs?
As Commissioner Toyoka alluded to, we had a great conversation in regards to the MOU and our county fairgrounds board. I feel like their chair, Audio, has done a great job in a first draft of what our hopes are for that MOU. And I know that it goes to county for additional add-ins, to make sure that this process is streamlined. I think that we can come to a very positive agreement that helps both them relieve some excess workload and stress, open up our resources to help them solve some concerns, but also to hopefully help alleviate some budgetary, everything, the more that we can streamline, I think the better progress that we can make, making that fairground the best that it can possibly be. And so, just a thanks to county staff, but also to their fair board for opening up this conversation. And I really look forward to seeing what fair, like, what comes out of it here in the next couple of years, because I think that, you know, things are, things are gonna really be wonderful and be a great event center for our community to visit. In regards to other activities, those are to come. I have quite a full workload in front of me here in the next two weeks, and so we shall see what happens next.
Thank you, Commissioner Bangs. And I don't have anything to report. County manager?
Chair Quayle, members of the board, and I don't know if Commissioner Thompson would wanna expand on my brief comments, but we did meet with the Oregon Housing and Community Services Director this afternoon, Director Bell, and additional staff to talk about the rural challenges regarding housing development and services to the homeless. And it actually is gonna turn out to be the first of additional meetings. I think that Director Bell was very open to ways that Oregon Housing and Community Services can be relevant to the county, and the county's certainly interested in being relevant to Oregon Housing and Community Services. So, I think there'll be additional meetings to kind of develop strategies as we move forward. Alyssa Gertler from NOA was part of the conversation, which was really helpful. And so, there'll be more to come on that topic. This was, this meeting was a result of a letter that the board sent to the department regarding their legislative agenda and their support for rural housing initiatives. To Commissioner Toyoka's discussion about electric vehicles, we are working on a sustainability plan, and part of that is to identify ways that we can embrace technology, whether it's building technology like HVAC systems, heat pumps, as well as vehicles. And I think Commissioner Toyoka outlined a lot of the thoughts we have, too, which is, you know, hybrid and other vehicle innovations may be a stepping stone for what may come future-wise. And so, we'll be coming to your board with just kind of an overview of what that might look like. And it deals with just the organization's operations to make sure that we're making good business decisions as we move forward. And then the last is that next week, Alyssa will be joining us from NOA to talk a little bit about NOA, so you can have introductions, as well as talk a little bit about the ARPA funding and some potential investments as we think about how we can partner with NOA differently as we move forward. So, and that's all I have for my report. Thank you.
Ask and you shall receive. That's great. Thank you, county manager. We have one item on the business agenda this evening, which is the appointment of Board of Property Tax Appeals members on page 167. And I'll turn it over to Tracy Kamenko, our county clerk. Tracy?
Good evening. For the record, Tracy Kamenko, county clerk. Before you today is to appoint the county governing body and non-office holding members to the Board of Property Tax Appeals. Pursuant to ORS 309.067, county governing bodies appoint two pools of individuals by October 15th of each year, from which the county clerk selects members of the County Board of Property Tax Appeals, otherwise known as BOPDA. One pool of members consists either of members of the county governing body or of the governing bodies designated. The second pool must be comprised of non-office holding residents of the county who are not employees of the county or of any taxing district within the county. The number of names placed in the pool shall be sufficient to meet the projected needs for a board member, for board members for the term of appointment for which the pools are prepared. A call for applications was issued on August 1st, 2022. The deadline to apply was September 13th, 2022. We have a total of two applicants plus one appointed, well, volunteer office holding position. Commissioner Toyoka was designated to serve as the office holding board member at the January 27th, 2021 work session during liaison appointments. The term of each member shall begin on the date of appointment and shall end on June 30th, 2023. For our applicants today, we have Greg Friedman, who has had prior BOPDA service, David Ozer, who has also had prior BOPDA service. And to fill out our team of three for our board, we will have Commissioner Toyoka as our office holding position. Ask that you approve.
Thank you, Tracy. Any other questions or comments?
Those two gentlemen are immensely qualified. They're very thorough, so great comfort that they're on the board.
Yeah, I agree. You have a motion?
Yes.
Oh.
I move to approve the appointment of Commissioner John Toyoka as the governing body member, and appoint Greg Friedman and David Ozer to the non-office holding pool of Board of Property Tax Appeals for the 2022-2023 year.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve the appointment of Commissioner John Toyoka as the governing body member, and appoint Greg Friedman and David Ozer to the non-office holding pool of the Board of Property Tax Appeals for the 2022-2023 year. All those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Tracy.
Thank you, commissioners. You can't get out of it, no.
You're on.
No. Listen, we always...
Thank you, Commissioner Toyoka. We do appreciate it.
We do, because I know what they're getting into.
We were tied.
We have any other items this evening?
Okay. Will anybody have anything for the good of the order? Not seeing any, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Have a good rest of your Wednesday night.